I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning again.
Morning.
Is there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, you have a packet with auditor warrants and claims. There was a mistake made when the agenda was first published and the social services claims were put in twice and the commissioner claims were not put in at all. So this is the current one. It was resolved. It's correct on the website now, but now you have all the other.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion?
I'm in.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Public input. Would anyone like to speak this morning? Going once, going twice. So, okay, we'll close public input and move on to the consent agenda. Again, any changes or additions, subtractions?
I'm going to approve.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We still have county employee recognition. With the Auditor Treasurer's Office, we have Julie Bros, Deputy Auditor Treasurer, began her full-time position on June 20th, 2022. Good morning.
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 Environmental Services, we have William Cal Larson, Environmental Specialist, began the full-time position on June 13th, 2022. Sheriff's Department, we have Gabriel Arola, dispatcher jailer, began the full-time position on June 7th, 2022. Stephen Kinsley, Deputy Sheriff, began the part-time position on June 14th, 2022. Adam Gucci, dispatcher jailer, transferred from part-time to full-time position on June 20th, 2022. Social Services, Abigail Merschman, Social Worker, Children's Services, began the full-time position on June 13th, 2022. Solid Waste, we have Timothy Scotten, Certified Attendant, is recognized for one-plus year of service from September 10th, 2020 to June 20th, 2022. And then we have Veteran Services, Aaron Majors, Assistant County Veteran Services Officer, began the full-time position on June 8th, 2022. Good morning. Next, we have Highway and Survey.
Good morning. Got a few things for you today. First on our agenda is to review and approve updated quotes for tandem plow trucks. If you recall, back in March, you had approved the purchase of two tandem trucks, trying to get in on some earlier pricing and also to get the order in because of the delay in delivery times. Well, apparently, we missed the allocation from Mack Trucks. And so, we were informed by our vendor that Mack would not be able to supply those 2023 Mack Trucks at the time. And so, if we wanted to get in on the 2024 pricing, then they submitted new updated quotes, and they're about 4% plus some material costs higher than what was approved in March, which it's an unfortunate thing. I don't think, we don't have any control over it. The other bids were off of the state contract, but there is a disclaimer on their paperwork that says if the manufacturer comes back and says, you know, we either can't supply or there's changes in pricing, that that accepted quote is no longer good at that time. So, we had discussions with the State Procurement Office about, you know, what happens with the state contract and if they're unable to meet those requirements and whatnot. So, we're not alone in this. It's happening a lot. And, you know, they want to know about it because it is, you know, it is a state contract and they're not able to hold on to it. But, you know, whether that affects anything negatively going down the road for that or not, I don't know. But, anyway, if we want to get in on the early order for the 2024, then we got an updated quote from RDO Truck Centers, $133,331 for each of those trucks. We have not been informed of anything for the box and the snowplow equipment through BERT, so we're hoping that those quotes remain good. That's a little bit different process with them. But, so, the approved amounts from back in March were 127,534, so it's a little under $6,000 per truck that it increased in just that time, so.
So, Chet, I'll make that motion with the, because I have the understanding, at least with everything going up. We had a couple of buses. We're up eight grand this morning. And I totally get it, and I don't think there's any way of getting around it.
I'll second that. Because I think the most important piece was, you know, trying to save a little bit of money, getting under the right contract was important, but it's more about the delivery of the truck and when you get it. And if you don't order it early enough, you're going to be in trouble.
Yeah. So hopefully, we're in on the next allocation at this price. That's all we can do. We're very happy with the Mack Trucks, and so it'd still be my recommendation to stick with this manufacturer, but.
And what's the expected delivery date?
We don't know. No, sometime, you know, we were anticipating even the other ones would have been later, 2023. And that's why we didn't have a truck in the budget for 2022, so it was kind of an advance deal. But we don't pay till we get the trucks also, so then we're able to budget through the '23 cycle, too. So, I wouldn't expect these any sooner than probably the end of '23, early '24.
Okay. Thank you. So, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. We got discussion of the five-year road construction proposal and the continuation of the local option sales tax. We held two public meetings and also public hearings regarding the local option sales tax on June 6th in Park Rapids and June 8th in Lake George. The attendance in Park Rapids, we had 10 residents come in, all four County Road 23. And then in Lake George, we had four attendees, all from Fern Township. So, the attendance was not very widespread as far as, you know, different input from different areas, but a couple roads out there that were of concern. And obviously, we had pretty good discussion regarding those roads. But, we didn't, I didn't hear any feedback regarding the proposed five-year plan of, you know, any changes to it or questions regarding what was on there. So, open it up for discussion with the board on any issues you might see with the proposed plan.
Chet and members of the board, I guess, when we had the first meeting, of course, we had County Road 23, and that's been an issue for quite some time, way before me, back in Lyles time. And it's something that's on the road plan, I believe, the last.
It is for 2027.
2027, whatever. I'd like to keep that on, no matter what happens in the future with the rest of the board. That should be addressed, one way or the other. So, overall, I'm looking at it and thinking that your five-year road plan is spot on. And unless any other members want to change something, I think it's, I think it's good.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. With that said, then, I guess I would ask for approval of the five-year construction program along with the resolution in support of continuing the local option sales tax. That resolution should have been in the packet, I believe, and.
I'll make that motion. Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Very good. And then we'll get that updated on the county website as our proposed plan moving forward. And I'll get the proper paperwork submitted to the state for the continuation of the local option sales tax. So, thank you. Then we got review and approve quote for annual culvert supplies. This is a little bit later in the year than we typically do this, but, yeah, we've been busy putting culverts in and townships are using culverts, too. So, we got to restock the inventory. This is a budgeted item, so we did solicit quotes on this. We received two, with the low being True North Steel out of Fargo, North Dakota, $28,599.76, which includes the freight-together debt here. So, these are the two companies that we typically receive quotes from.
Is there a difference in price from this year compared to the last time?
Oh, yeah. It's definitely increased. Yep. I don't know what percentage, but we're ordering more, too, so it's a little misleading. But, I think we've been in that, I would say, 17,000, 18,000 range of what we spent in past years, but it's up.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And then Jeff will give you a construction project update.
Yes, certainly. As of this morning, Sir Lines-A-Lot, our pavement marking contractor for our annual driving contract, did the work, actually, probably a couple weeks ago already. William D. Saboniak, our gravel contractor, should have all the roads in the southern part of the county that were under contract for resurfacing completed by the end of the week. That's their schedule. EnviroTech Services Incorporated, our contractor for calcium chloride and dust mallet of products, should still be completed by the end of the month on schedule. They're keeping up with everything in spite of the rain and touching up some roads. For instance, after last night's rain, they could get some areas as well. On our County Road 7 project with Mark Sand and Gravel, their subcontractor, Ryerson Construction, did complete grading on County Road 91 and gravel surfacing. They completed milling. And Mark Sand and Gravel, so, completed all the pavement reclamation, and they're currently fine-grading that road surface in an effort to get it ready for paving, which we anticipate will start tentatively tomorrow on County Road 7. Probably going south of County Road 24, that direction initially. They've also got a little bit of work to do for Lake Emmett Township on some resurfacing that might be their initial payment application out there. And that work is still to be completed after 37 working days, which will put them into July now. And, of course, everything's subject to delay due to rain and wet conditions and so forth. Knife River Materials, our contractor for County Road 16, they're planning to begin milling the pavement surface out there on the 5th of July. And they'll move right from that into some of the culvert work and replacements, as well as the pavement reclamation. And their tentative schedule is to begin paving the latter part of July on around the 28th, and that would be wrapping up paving and probably towards the end of the first week of August into the second week. That project tendatively being completed by mid-August. So, and then next, June 28th is our next one. We have a bid opening scheduled for our Tussaw 49, the storm sewer and paving repair work we're going to do right in Akeley that we stopped and looked at a load order. Anything else?
That should be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Natural Resource Management.
Good morning.
Morning.
First item on the agenda is a item that was tabled from our last, your last meeting, the transfer of a cabin lease of Dennis Dietrich to Mike Mead. I did update the website to have our current lease policy on there, and it does allow transfers. So, what I need is your permission to issue a new lease for this cabin.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the timber appraisals for our next timber auction, scheduled for July 11th. This is predominantly a salvage operation. Many of the tracts of timber that are on this auction are east of Itasca State Park, south of Beauty Lake, one of the areas that we've got hit real hard with. And right now, we have these 10 tracts totaling 520 acres, and approximate value is $102,000. You know, we never know really where to start the, you know, the appraised value on these things because we don't know, you know, how much of it's really salvageable. This one is a particular difficult situation in that it was more of a tornado, tornadic activity, and you've got, you know, trees in every which direction snapped off, tipped over. You know, in a straight-line wind, when they're all facing one direction, it's a little bit easier for the loggers to get in there, and at least they know which direction the trees are going to be. But, these are all kind of tangled up. So, you know, we started our praise prices about a quarter of what we normally get. So, we'll have to see what we end up with at the auction.
We had more trees down last night.
Did you?
Yep. So, I wonder in that same area if there'll be more down.
It could very well be. I know we've got, certainly got more that we need to do. And we probably will be looking at having another auction maybe sometime in August to put more of this stuff up in there. I did get a call from a gal that has several hundred acres of land on County 89 that had a lot of storm damage go through. So, you know, the private groups are trying to clean up their land as well, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? I guess I got a question. What if they don't sell?
Can we lower the price and try again?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Now, one other item I just wanted to bring to your attention is that last week, we did close on the 46 acres of Conservation Fund lands north and east of, or north and west of Emmettville. So, that is now in county ownership. So, the rest of that block should be coming by the end of this month. I think there's about 700 and some acres between there and up in School Craft.
And then when will you start identifying parcels to sell?
For the, one, for the 46 acres, I've already identified a parcel that we can do a land exchange with.
Okay.
That one is, I think we can, we can work on that one right away. I've got a list of parcels that we could sell. Can't do the exchange on the remaining parcels because of the funding source that we're using. So, but certainly, we can still identify lands that we could sell, so.
Just a reminder for the board, you know, when we acquired Deep Lake, we talked about selling that other property.
Yeah.
That we were looking at for a campground. So, things like that, we need to continue to bring to the forefront so they get done.
Definitely.
We were dragging our heels a little bit for the potential of that legislative action that we were hoping to have completed, but that's not going to happen, it looks like.
I think that got stalled again this year.
Yep.
And the primary benefit is putting these parcels back on the tax rolls. The secondary benefit is we were going to be able to keep more of those sales for land management. So, that, it probably doesn't mean delaying any further.
Right.
Thank you. All right. Solid Waste.
Good morning. All right. So, the first item I have is to review and approve quote for 60 concrete blocks for the North Transfer Station project. We received two quotes for this, and it's, this is in conjunction with the fabric building that we approved at the last board meeting. It's the foundation which the building's going to be placed on. The low quote was from Lakes Concrete Plus out of Bemidji for $3,450, and that includes delivery and setting them locks off. So, yeah, I don't think I really have much else to add. I can answer any questions for it, so.
Pretty cut and dried. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Dan, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Then I don't know if you guys want to hear maybe a small, just a recap or update on the fire that we had at our facility.
Sure.
Just wanted to, again, highlight, I know I kept you guys in the loop a little bit, but we did have a fire at the transfer station in Park Rapids on June 9th, early in the morning. It started on the commercial side of the building. In the non-burnable pile of the transfer station, smoke started in the pile around 1:00 a.m. Building was totally engulfed with smoke by around 2:00 a.m. And the fire ignited shortly after, shortly after 2:00 a.m. And the sprinkler system and fire alarm panel sent out notifications, and the sprinklers activated about 2:00 a.m. in the morning. So, the fire department was notified. We were notified, staff, or me and Janelle were notified, and we got there quickly as we could as well. In the sprinkler system, it seems like it took about a minute before the sprinkler system activated, activated to when the fire was out. So, it worked pretty quickly and worked as designed. The sprinkler contractor, when he was repairing the sprinklers, there were seven sprinkler heads that deployed on the fire. He ended up replacing 12, and he estimated about 500 gallons of water per minute were going, was being dispensed onto the fire. So, the fire departments from Park Rapids and Monaga responded to the fire, as well as law enforcement and first responders. And they worked quickly to extinguish, you know, finishing extinguishing the fire, controlling any hot spots. And by about 4:30 in the morning, all emergency personnel had left the scene, and we started looking at, looking at what we had to clean up and called in staff to start the cleanup process and make kind of a plan to get everything cleaned up. We were able to open normally the next morning at 7:30. Just had to delay traffic around the one end of the building for the morning. And then by early afternoon, we were pretty much back to normal operations and had the mess contained and cleaned up. We don't know what the cause of the fire was, but potentially, you know, we've talked about rechargeable batteries being an issue, so that could have been a potential cause of the fire. And, yeah, I mean, everything, you know, with the new building, everything seemed to work as it was designed to. So, the damage was pretty much limited to a big material handler, just some damage to the body panels on the equipment being warped, and smoke damage to the inside of the building and some of the equipment that was in there. So, we're working with MCIT and getting all that scheduled and cleaned up. And, yeah, for having a fire, I think it went about as smoothly as it could. And, again, you know, I really appreciate the quick response and the efforts of the fire department and first responders and our staff for getting everything cleaned up and back and operational quickly, so.
It was good to see that the systems work the way they're designed to.
And we have a building still and operating as normal, so.
And actually, it got back into operation quickly.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I don't know, Gina has an item for HR. Do we want to discuss that now with staffing, or do we want to wait?
Yeah.
We'll find either way.
Gina, if you're ready to, item, address item 10A while Josh is still here.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, before you, item 10A is a request for a change in complement for a certified attendant position in the Solid Waste Department. The action being requested is to approve, approve the change. Approve the change in complement of the certified attendant position from five full-time, one regular part-time, and one non-regular part-time to six full-time and one regular part-time upon recommendation of the Solid Waste Administrator. So, I just, so, do you want to go first?
Yeah, we should make a motion a second. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept that.
Okay, I'll second. And then I have a question. So, currently, are these, all these positions filled or will be filled?
So, we just had the resignation of our, the one non-regular part-time position.
Yep.
So, that's what we're looking at, changing this to backfill for that.
Okay. And then the rest of them are already filled at this time?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I know you've had this problem before, trying to fill with part-time. It's hard. Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. And that is all I had, unless you guys have anything else. All right. Thank you. Social Services.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, the first item I have is to review and approve the quote for forensic interview equipment. So, currently, our equipment is only security equipment, so it's not specialized in forensic interviewing, which is causing a delay in the video feed and the sound quality. Also, the equipment's starting to not work properly, as in the sound's not coming through the microphones. We have to have phones on speakerphone, which can cause issues or concerns with the client we're interviewing. They're already fragile with what they're going through. And so, having a phone off the hook can raise concerns where they're not going to speak to us and open up about what happened. So, I did receive two quotes. I do recommend we go with the quote received from Northland Business Systems. They are out of Burnsville with the estimation to be $16,425.91. Funding for this equipment would be from our opioid response grant. It allows the upgrade to our equipment to better serve our community. And that's all I have. If I'm open to questions.
Have we used the Northland Business Systems before?
We have not. We used a company back in 2015 out of Fargo, which is now known as Johnson Controls. But, I contacted the advocacy center out of Bemidji, and this is the equipment that they use, and they are very happy with the equipment. I witnessed interviews up there, and it's a very good quality equipment.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I believe, when I was reading this prior to the meeting, somewhere in here, it says, too, that if you don't have this equipment, then the interviews would have to be done in Bemidji.
Correct.
Which is not, it's just not a good situation. I'll make a motion to approve.
Chair, and I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And then the second item is a continuation from the last board meeting. There were some further questions about the contract for family-based counseling services out of, from Stellar. They are not a new service provider. This is just a renewal of a contract. They are not a new service provider. This is just a renewal of a contract. Last year, we served about twenty-seven children and there's only one provider that Stellar has in Hubbard County. Hopefully, they'll add to it, but the one we have is, he's very good. So I would recommend that we can continue with that contract.
So last week, I think I made the comment that this was a change and this was, I was, I was wrong. And after, in the afternoon, we, we met and Amanda ran through this with, with the supervisors group and said, no, this is, this is just a continuation of, of services we've offered with the same provider.
So did I hear you right, there was only one, one, let's see, what would you say, one employee that was able to do this, is that what you said?
It's one CTSS worker that is hired through Stellar. And they only have one that services our county for right now.
But they're not, they're not an employee of Hubbard County, they're an employee, yeah.
Yeah, they're employees.
So does that CTSS practitioner, that's what it really is, provide services to other school districts?
Stellar does.
Is this person?
But this provider does not go into the schools. This is in-home. They are a licensed counselor, so they provide in-home therapy as well and can work with families on therapy.
So it's not a CTSS practitioner?
He does CTSS. I, they, how they coordinate, they do it both, but he is a clinician, so he is able to do both, but he's classified, from my understanding, as a CTSS worker.
Can I get a motion?
Kind of a necessary thing, correct? I'll make that one. Should have it.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And then I just have one quick thing. I just wanna thank Hubbard County, it's been a great place to work for, especially the last year with my leukemia diagnosis. The staff here have been great to work with and been very understanding about my time to be flexible. So I really appreciate that and I am in remission, just everybody knows. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Sheriff's Department.
Ryan Curry. Good morning.
Morning.
All right, the only item I have is requesting approval to purchase from Midstates Wireless of Fargo, a BDA, which is a bidirectional amplifier. In other words, it's a booster for jail. Our staff back there communicate constantly with each other. With the concrete and the design, it just, there's so much, so, it's so often that you can't get through on the radio to each other, so. This would alleviate that with the boosted signal. We did get two quotes. As you see, the one from DSC Communications did not include the labor. So they wouldn't provide a labor unless they came and did a walkthrough. They didn't do, they, they didn't do that, so. If you added that, if you looked at what the labor from Midstates was, it's gonna be very comparable quotes. Based on the fact that Midstates actually does all of our radio business. I'm requesting the approval of the Midstates Wireless quote of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents to be paid out of jail. Be the jail equipment fund with budgeted dollars.
So Cory, did we just do one of these last, last year or the year before?
Not for the jail.
For courthouse or somewhere over here?
Courthouse got one, yes.
And it still won't reach down there?
No, no, the, these type of boosters are very for one area, like one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's totally a different, small scene purposes, yes. Yeah, it's not like our, something that we would put on a tower.
Right, right.
But that's a half a million dollar upgrade. These are obviously for specific areas. Like a hospital, you would put one in, a courthouse, you would put one in and yes, we.
The concrete's the problem. So Cory, the radios that are using internally, aren't they all armor?
Mm-hmm. Yep, but those particular radios do not go off of our towers. Those are like a car-to-car type of channel.
Field channel.
Yes, yep, that they would use, cuz they're, when they're so close, you know, in a building, you don't need them to go hit off of the Nevis Tower with a signal and come back, you know, it's all internally.
Can you make that motion?
Thank you, Dan.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have unless the board has something for me. We're keeping our heads above water.
Jail population's still up?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, a lot of people in jail, a lot of drug DUI arrests is probably the main, if I wanna say, cause of it, which is good. That's a public safety thing, you know, getting people like that off the roadways, so.
What's the average stay for that?
I don't know yet and I'm gonna tell you why, because on those you get a blood test and it takes, it can take up to a year, and I, I hate to say that, to get the results back from the BCA. So we don't know what the sentence is gonna be on those, for those people, yeah. Unfortunately, it takes forever. The BCA needs more lab technicians is what they need, so.
Any more information or thoughts on drug court?
I'm certainly open to it. I don't, I don't know that there's been any progress made since the last time that it's been discussed, you know, with the committee, which has been quite some time ago.
Is there any?
It was pre-COVID, I think, last time.
Ah, I'm guessing, yeah, but no, I'm, I'm certainly willing, you know, nothing has changed on, on my end. I think it's whoever was organizing that and I believe it initiated from probation. I think would simply need to maybe get the ball rolling again, but I'm, I'm still willing to try it, definitely.
Is there any opportunities for that? Should it go or momentum get moving again this year?
It certainly could be. I, I think part of it with probation at the time was a funding thing and I think they had funding for it, which is I believe why it, it started with the momentum that it did. Is there still funding for, from the state for probation, for a probation agent for that? I'm not really sure. I tell you what I will do, I can speak to the new supervisor, Mark, on that and see, you know, where we're at. If it's, if it's on him to, to try to get the ball rolling again, I'll certainly talk to him about that.
You think if probation does get this going, will it make it any further up the ladder?
Well, I think it'll go to all the sources it needs to go to. Will it get approval from all those people? I'm not sure.
That's what I was wondering, if there's any change on that end?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, that I'm not sure if, if there's been any more buy-in or not.
Cory, you know, having a full jail over there practically now, if you were just to guesstimate, how many, what percentage of those inmates would probably qualify and be, you know, the drug court would be, or specialty court would be useful for?
Yes, there would definitely be a percentage. It just depends, you know, those, drug court would not be for every drug offender. You know, if you have felony level of offenders and I'll, I'm gonna tell you, there's plenty of them that are, probably would not be a candidate for it. But definitely, there definitely would be, you know, some of them, but the thing of it is, the lower level ones are no longer in jail. So the ones that are being held are the higher level ones, so, you know, probably not a large population or a large percentage of them, but certainly some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, would, would most of these people be under the age of forty that are being held?
You know, it would surprise you, the age of these people. It really would, but most of them, yes, but there's a, there's a lot of them that are, that are older than that.
It's actually, it's actually, when it comes to chemical dependency.
A few years ago, a few years ago, when we had a very substantial drug bust, you know, we had like thirty people.
I remember.
On all those charges, they were on the front page of the paper and it would shock you at the age of some of, there were some of them over in their sixties.
Yeah, there were, I remember that.
Yeah, there was a large population that were.
How many are repeat?
What's that?
How many are repeat?
Quite a few.
That's, that's the thing is I, I know when I first took this job, I read a long report from Minnesota Judicial Watch and it lowered recidivism by about thirty percent in most cases. And I think Roseau County is having success with their specialty courts, so if you could lower recidivism by thirty percent, it seems like a victory to me. For not only, for not only the taxpayer, but the person that needs the help.
Plus then the people that are close to them. I mean, it extends out into their family and the behaviors.
But right now, we're just, you know, processing them, locking them up. They're doing their time, they go back out, pick up where they left off and we're going through this whole process over and over and over again with a little longer stay every time.
Which is why some communities have quit prosecuting, but then, but then that just leads to further lawlessness.
Right.
It's not the end-all be-all, but the question is, is it a better way of doing it than what we're doing now?
Yeah, and I don't know what the answers are, you know, for so many, when you force somebody into treatment, that simply doesn't work. You know, I know people that have been into treatment a half a dozen times and they will be in treatment again. It's one of those, you know, situations that simply is not effective. I'm certainly not saying that incarceration changes them, but it's the accountability part, the punishment part, where they have, you have to hold them accountable for the crimes they're committing. What I do know is while these drug dealers are in jail, they're not selling meth to kids. So that's the one thing that I do know is effective as far as that goes.
Yeah, and I'm all, I'm a hundred percent aligned with you on that, but on the same token, if there's somebody that can be helped.
Yep.
And we can, we can put a process in play that can actually help them, we should be trying to do that.
Right, no, I agree. I'm, I'm all for, you know, trying this, you know, with, with the drug court. We just need the buy-in, I believe, of one person. I will put some feelers out though. We'll find out where it's at. Maybe I'll talk to them myself.
So I remember the last ACES, supposing we had that, there were people, the, some of the speakers talked about the success of drug court. So I'm assuming we're gonna hear that again in August this time.
Maybe.
Maybe?
Maybe, I don't, I don't know. Cuz it, I mean, the importance is there, but maybe the people attending don't have enough influence to influence our county yet. We'll see.
Oh, I'm talking about other counties. That came in and spoke last time. They talked about they'd had success with the drug.
All right, anything else? If you have any issues, you know how to get ahold of me. Or if anybody calls with issues, they can get ahold of me too. We're certainly willing to do what we can, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are a lot of new deputies there.
Human Resources.
So many names?
Yeah, it's completely changed. It's gonna be hard to manage.
But it's a good thing people even wanna go into that field.
True.
So the item of Human Resources, ten B, personal leave of absence without pay. Personnel policy provides for in section fifteen, a leave of absence without pay as authorized by a department manager to approve requests for personal leave of absentee union contract language. A request in excess of ten days requires board approval for the policy. The employee will be exhausting the initial personal leave request. An additional ten days is being requested. The time may or may not be needed, but we're requesting for the approval. The recommendation is to approve an additional ten days of personal leave for employee upon recommendation of the department manager and the documentation is on file in Human Resources.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you for responding to my email. Answered my question.
Next, we have Finance.
Where did Kay go?
She was here just a moment ago.
Yeah, I don't know if on ACES that item is gonna be brought up, but if you can't make it to the top, you're wasting your energy.
Yeah, which is the problem here.
And so, yeah, I have to be politically correct.
We took care of one of them earlier.
Yeah, I realized that, but I was on my way. So, good morning.
Morning.
I have one item and that is to approve the absentee ballot board for the 2022 election season.
Do you have ample?
We have party balance.
Yeah, bud.
Party balance.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Sharon. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
There was some discussion at AMC about maybe having you come in and do a work session with the commissioners just to go through a broad overview of the whole election process so that we are better armed to answer questions in public.
I would be happy to do that.
That would be great.
I think that's a great idea.
That would be a good refresher, yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz I, I get tons, I know I get tons of questions and I, I certainly don't have all the answers on that stuff. It's, it's a lot to know.
So the primaries in August?
August ninth.
August ninth, so a July work session, just kind of a review and identify a workflow and we'll, we'll take a look, but at, at the AMC conference, Anoka County had put together a little YouTube video just to kind of walk people through and show them what the process looks like and how the mail ballots are, you know, et cetera, so that's kind of the conversation that we had and, and I think if we schedule that for the July work session, we don't have to take a lot of time with it, but if everybody understands the process here, when somebody from the public asks you a question, you'll be able to answer it and direct them to staff with, with, for details.
Plus any public listening.
Yep.
It would be helpful for them.
Yeah, cuz the hard part is what the people see on national TV and that process that takes place or pieces of that that end up not getting that does not mean that occurs everywhere.
Counties in Minnesota are generally quite consistent because we all abide by the Secretary of State's rules and statutes. So we're all quite uniform. We might have different equipment, but all of the equipment is approved and tested by the Secretary of State. So, but I would say first and foremost, one of the things you should know right now is Friday, this Friday, the twenty-fourth, is the first day for mail ballot and absentee balloting. We use an outsourcer to process our mail ballots and which, which thankfully for our team, there's not as many as there was in 2020, so the impact to our team should be manageable. But they will mail those out and usually we get a date as to when they're mailed. They might not be mailed Thursday or Friday, some, sometimes they're mailed Monday. We will be ready for any absentee voters that come into the courthouse on Friday. So we got our ballots yesterday, so.
And just one other, like housekeeping thing, the old HLDC office downstairs is now the home this year through the election for the election equipment, so. That was just kind of made because it was overflow and we needed to do that and then we agreed that we would leave it there through the election and make sure that we had adequate space for that and then we'll reassess after, after November.
We are quite spread out this year. I tried to schedule all of the rooms that we need. And I know there's some scheduling conflicts when we need to be in for elections. There's courts already scheduled, but often they settle before, so it's not needed, so I'm just gonna remain hopeful, but it is helpful to know that we have that room as overflow. And right now, there is new equipment for those mail ballot precincts in 2020 that have come back to be an in-person. We, thanks to grants, fifty, up to fifty percent of that has all been covered, so, you know, and, and we budget a little bit for equipment each year, so the hit to the county isn't all at once. It's, it's spread out.
Okay, I have a quick question. What's your staffing, current staffing ratio? What do you, how many staff members do you have?
We have ten hired. Well, we have our regular six, Julie just came on yesterday, and we have four election. and we have four election, uh, part-time temporary staff hired to start, excuse me, June, July.
So we just got a new hire for driver's license or for downstairs?
Well, she's, she's a deputy auditor treasurer. She's going to mainly fill that treasurer spot, uh, that issues driver's licenses. However, not yet because she's not quite approved by the DCA yet, so we're waiting on that to come back. But we have plenty of things for her to do right now within treasury.
My next question is, will we ever be able to go, um, and provide customer service during the lunch hours?
It's very difficult right now with our staffing, especially when there's only two people on. Um, even now, they don't always get their breaks, uh, because they can't just say, well, my break starts at ten-thirty. You know, customer, you have to wait and come back, or, you know, they will always finish a customer service until they can go on break, and it just might work out so that they don't get one. I know years ago, we did not have a lunch hour.
Right.
And it was very difficult to manage. They appreciate very much that they are able to take a lunch hour, lunch, half hour, pardon me.
So years ago, um, referencing that time period, how many employees did you have when you first came?
Three. Three in the License Center.
And we're right now currently?
Well, we will have three.
It wasn't that long ago. It was maybe two years ago, a year and a half ago that you made the change. Was that pre-COVID? Or right, right during COVID?
I think it was right about when COVID started, maybe after we had the shutdown and then we came back.
Okay, cause I remember the discussion. I just don't remember when it happened.
The biggest challenge is the fact that her office is split between two floors. I mean, if there were six people and they were all in the same space, it would be a different, coverage would be a different issue than it is when they're split three and three.
Thank you.
It would have a very different workflow if we were all together.
Sue, you have a question?
I do. Is there some deadline for election judge training or something?
Well, election, uh, township clerks, township city clerks have until July fifteenth to let me know who their teams are and when and where they were trained. We are training in-person this year. Um, in previous years, um, twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty, we allowed, uh, online training. Uh, but there have been so many changes this year that, uh, we are just going to have in-person training. A couple of weeks ago, I, I met, um, with the northern judges for clerks, clerks training, not judges, northern clerks. Uh, where did we go? Hart Lake Township, and then we also met with clerks here during the day at the courthouse. And then I have election judge training started, I think, July twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and August second. The twenty-eighth, we're going to train at Lakeport, which, which is helpful to those northern townships that they don't have to come all the way to Park Rapids. And then, um, August fourth is head judge training and equipment pickup. That's here in the courthouse, starting at, they all start at five-thirty. And then, of course, the election is August ninth.
So I was asked on Saturday, cause Ergo has a new clerk, um, what she needed to do, and I said to contact you. Did she contact you?
Yeah, yeah, she came to the clerk training.
Wonderful.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I look forward to working with her.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kay.
You're welcome.
Administrator. Uh, the only, uh, things I have are relative to kind of up, uh, updates and announcements are that, uh, we need to identify who's gonna be at the department head meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Uh, Tom was there last.
And I was before Tom, so.
Okay, so it'd be between David and Dan? If we go in rotation, I think it's David's turn.
Okay. It's fine, that'd be good.
And then the second item was that, uh, we were scheduled to have a general, general government meeting this morning at eleven o'clock, and I still hope that we can get that in, but it will be, uh, after the continuation, after, after the completion of the continuation of the County Board of Appeals and Equalization. So I talked to Jamie, and we're kind of planning on taking a ten-minute break and reset, and then come back for the, uh, continuation of the County Board of Appeals. And then we'll do the same thing after that, if there's time, um, for the general government meeting. The only item on the general government meeting today is to kind of look at a summary of the, um, of the positions that have been requested at the, at the front end of the, um, budget process. Just wanted to make sure that we had eyes on that number before we, before we push that all out into the worksheets.
Jeff, do you wanna update the board on, on Park Villa? Just Ekumans letter that, or that they sent out?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think, well, when I first got here, you had, um, worked with OHC to do an appraisal of the property, and the direction at that point in time was that we needed two appraisals, one for Park Villa and one for the rest of the Heritage Campus, because we understood that, that Park Villa was not owned by the county. So we received a letter, I, I don't know who all got a copy of that a couple of weeks ago, from, from Ekumen management just reiterating that that's theirs, right? And we, we know that, and the, the brokerage agreement with SLIB represents that. They're representing the heritage properties consisting of the three, uh, the three units. The long-term care, the nursing, skilled nursing, and the memory care facilities are the, are the ones that the county owns. So that, that's all happening. I, um, I did get the, um, what was the term that he used? Anyway, the prospectus basically that, that SLIB has available. They, they sent out a, a photographer a couple of weeks ago to go take some pictures. They put the prospectus together. I received the, the draft of it yesterday, um, and he intends to be making contacts early next week relative to the people that are on the list. Um, I've had people contact me. We've had names that were submitted. He's got all, Bradley Klausing from SLIB has all that information. He said next week, they're gonna hit the ground running.
Good.
So.
And going along with that, Ekumen, Park Villa has always been part of the Heritage Board meeting every other month. And so, um, Ekumen notified the Heritage Board that it's theirs. They're owning, they own it. So they're taking Park Villa off of the Heritage Board reporting.
So that never should have been under the authority of the Heritage Board. It never was. It never made much difference.
It was just an update.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I think that was all I had.
Okay.
Unless people have questions.
Next, we have committee reports.
Few notes here, quickly. And just reviewing AMC District Two meeting, uh, there was just a broad overview from each policy committee head. Uh, obviously, not much happened because the legislature didn't approve much of anything. So that was disappointing, but, uh, they'll have to go after it. We'll have to go after it this fall on our policy committee meetings heavily again. Of course, much of the work is done. It's just a matter of continuing to lobby the things that, uh, counties need. There was some general discussion about, uh, county boards of appeal and equalization, and most everyone is experiencing similar issues with that. Um, and our neighboring counties that have a lot of lakeshore, very similar. Brief discussion, as we touched on earlier, about election integrity and thoughts on having the auditor do a review of the process with commissioners, so we're better prepared to answer questions from the public. Uh, there were good discussions, discussion on election integrity and some of the problems that occurred with all the changes that occurred due to COVID and, and what commissioners and counties had to deal with. And what citizens had to deal with trying to get clarity on how to do, how to vote and where to properly go and stuff. Um, those things created some issues for counties. And let's see, Jeff and I had a chance to meet with some Lake, uh, Beltane folks, a group from there that may be advocating for a lake improvement district. Uh, they're working with Soil and Water Conservation District and, um, and discussions that somebody from that group being a representative on the new Crow Wing One Watership One Plan Advisory Board would probably be a really good idea. That's what I have. Thank you. Don't forget, the fair's coming up, July thirteenth through the seventeenth.
And are you gonna be there on the fifteenth? Or is anybody gonna be there on the fifteenth?
I will.
Cause then Marcel won't be there, just so you know.
Who will?
Marcel will not. You know, if you got the little pamphlet in the mail.
Yeah, I got the little thing in the mail.
Yeah, he's in Alaska, so it'll just be her. Are you gonna be there?
undecided.
Uh, Tom said he was going.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Tom will be the speaker, correct? Okay.
Do you wanna go next?
Uh, we can, uh, double tap this one Northwest Juvenile Training Center.
Okay.
So we had a meeting yesterday, um, Ted runs with the Budget Committee, and, um, we had an executive meeting yesterday. And we talked about, uh, Northwest, there are rate increases and things of that nature, and the processes behind, uh, budgeting for twenty-twenty-three, right? Um, as you know, uh, just like in any organization, uh, similar to Hubbard County, eighty percent of the budget is based on staff, and so they went, they base their budget on staffing and what's needed there, um, just like, uh, one of our department heads had mentioned regarding full-time and part-time staff. We've basically eliminated or tried to eliminate part-time staff and, um, increased nine more full-time staff. And let's see what else was there that was kind of important. We did a lot of improvements up there, uh, such as our, um, our kitchen is in-house now, uh, working with current trends. We're trying to maintain a high level of care. Uh, we think the changes made by the Executive Board slash Budget Committee will better serve the, um, clients, uh, needs. And this Friday, uh, Dan and Mindy will be going, uh, presenting to the judges, because the judges actually, um, on the full scheme of things, control, uh, the monies and/or salary of our executive director. So that's at nine or nine-thirty in Beltrami, right?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have anything else you wanna add on that process? How many times you met and?
Yeah, I guess the, the Bud, Budget Committee met three times. Um, like Dan was saying, uh, s- staff salaries are driving the main costs, of course. Um, they did switch from, uh, had more full-time employees versus part-time. They found that, uh, the full, more full-time staff, they get to know the kids or the residents, uh, better, um, which they can better serve them then. And the same thing with the, the residents, then they get to know the staff versus somebody coming in, a different person every day type of a situation. Um, and like Dan said, they, we did switch over to, uh, doing the, the meals themselves. Uh, the kids get involved. Um, it, it's had many benefits. Um, some of the, uh, residents, um, are able to use the, uh, one example. Um, uh, one of the residents needs to pay restitution, and working in the kitchen, they get to have those wages go towards their restitution, plus they are also learning a skill that will help them when they do graduate, uh, from that program. You wanna call it that?
So the real thing in a nutshell that we wanna inform you is that, uh, member increases for twenty-twenty-three will be about four point oh-five percent. Non-members, seven point two-eight percent.
Yes.
Just like everything else.
And we, uh, staff looked at what, uh, what the rates were at other facilities, and we raising our rates now, for the most part, are in line with these other facilities. But we know that these other facilities are also gonna probably be increasing their rates, so we will probably still be as we are now under what they are charging.
Right. Just a little information. That's all I have. Okay. Chair?
I had an HRA meeting yesterday. Excuse me, they have a new vision statement. Hubbard County HRA works in partnership to leverage resources to fill gaps and create opportunities in the development, redevelopment, and rehabilitation of properties countywide. And then we talked about, um, moving forward. We had a strategic planning session in April. And so, um, we had come up with four areas. Entry Cost Assistance Program to, um, help with down payment. Owner Occupied Rehab, multi-family housing development, and then Supportive Housing Development. Currently, there's a men and a women's house in Park Rapids that we work with social services on. The women's house is now empty, and, um, Mary and her staff have had to, instead of managing the house, they, they've had to manage people problems. And, um, the wi, it, it hasn't been conducive to moving the clients forward. It's just not a good environment. So, um, we actually scratched that as one of our four things that the HRA does well, because we figured, um, s- the supporting housing development needs to be handled by organizations or social services with others that can actually give them mental health support that they need. So we are looking at either renting out the women's house or selling it. We're gonna, we're gonna see which makes more sense. And if we sell it, we're gonna use the money to, um, help fund a multi, like a, a two or a fourplex on land that we own to help with the housing crisis. Um, the guidelines for our projects are, number one, does it create a solution to a critical housing need that supports success for county residents? Will the project bake, break even and is sustainable for long-term? And do we have the staffing and the resources to ensure success? And so, anything that comes before the board now, we're asking, you know, does it fit in the three criteria that we have, and then we're asking these questions to see. And I think I had one other thing. What was it? Nope, I guess that was it. Anyway, it was a, it was a very good meeting. We have eighty units, and out of the eighty units, only six people are late on the rent, so that's really good. And just for your information, the, uh, middle school apartments, which are forty-two units, are currently for sale. And so far, um, rumor has it that three out-of-town people are looking to, are interested in buying it.
What's the selling price?
Um, they weren't sure, but they thought two-point-six million.
Okay, so just a suggestion only. Um, I would not sell the, um, woman's housing over there, period. I would be thinking about the future, and if we ever do get the opportunity with Drug Court, that's gonna be a much-needed, uh, thing. And if I remember right, we had some monies from Prime Health West, um, that helped to secure that way back when, in two thousand twelve or thirteen. I, I guess I would not do that. Um.
In board discussion, they're not opposed to using, um, a housing unit for that, but the design of that particular house is not conducive, conducive for, um, people living together very well in a healthy way, and so they felt it would be better to actually build something new if you're gonna go down that road.
All I'm saying is keep that building, keep that property. I think it'd be better for Hubbard County in general, looking towards the future, far in the future. Just thought I'd throw that at you. And then, uh, who's representing social services in assisting either the male or the female portion of housing over there?
I know Mary has been working with Brian, but other than that, I cannot tell you.
Carolyn would be really good in that area. I know she's spread thin, but her expertise is there.
But once again, it's a, it's up to the department head to put into place who they want, and the HRA is only supposed to be managing the, the building, not the people.
Right, so we need to work on whoever represents that, um, buddy system. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I only had two. One was, uh, Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center, and the other one was the Foston Incinerator. Um, as twenty-twenty-two, uh, part of their report, uh, from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, mixed solid waste to the incinerator are down seven hundred tons. Hubbard County, though, get my numbers correct here, increased two-hundred-and-fifty-seven tons.
So who's going, why are they going down?
Good question.
Let's see, what did John say there? Um, I know Cass County went up quite a bit, too.
I would guess it has to do with, uh, with the tourist counties. They're going up, and the other ones are probably going down. If you think of Polk County, Monoman, Clearwater, that, they're probably down significantly. If you think of Polk County, Menomon, Clearwater, that they're probably down significantly.
I know, but they still have the residents that have garbage.
And some of it has to do with staffing, so they don't have the staff to do the, the sorting and everything. So some was going to the landfill.
Uh, yeah, that would make sense.
So they're making better use of landfill just north of there or whatever.
And then there's, uh, the ongoing issue with sterile sedge, uh, endangered plant that is not existing in the wetland that's by the landfill, uh, in gent, gent, gentry or genteel, whatever, however you pronounce it. It, it's pronounced both ways. But the DNR has found supporting plants that are in the same area where sterile sedge could be there. So it's kind of screwing up our, uh, our future expansion plans. So they have to look at, it's going to affect the cell that they're already using and they're capping it. And if they can't use the cell next to it, then they have to s, stop and slope at a different grade or at a quicker pace than what they would have to and then expand to another area.
Are they trying to save this plant or avoid it from proliferating?
Uh, they're trying to save the plant. They, they haven't found there yet, but they have found other plants in the area that also grow along with it.
Well, that's good. Protect the environment.
Uh, things are up though, uh, they're again, uh, recyclables, um, what we're receiving for aluminum and, and plastics and things like that are, are up. Cardboard and paper, uh, prices are up.
How about glass?
Glass, we grind those as, and make them into fines and then they cover the, uh, landfill.
Oh, okay, so they are no longer selling glass?
Yeah.
Because I know they were selling that a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, interesting.
And then, uh, I could be wrong though on, on some of the glass they may be selling, but I'd have to check my notes here. And then, um, the steam sales are up a little bit, but that again has to do with the, the companies that are, are the food producers and that that are in the area there. They can't find people to work, so they can't add more lines like they used to have. So even though the sales are down from historic levels, they are still up from the last couple of years. So everything going along there, uh, it looks like we can afford to keep going. Insurance though is going to go up next year, but not a, a great amount. I think it was twenty-some thousand dollars compared to the year before. But all in all, uh, things are looking, things are looking good for garbage.
So are, are they fully staffed or are they short-staffed also?
They're short-staffed, um, we're looking at buying a couple of robots.
Okay.
That was actually just at our last meeting, it was decided to, they would like to have a complement of about six of them, but we're looking at, at getting quotes and getting at least one, hopefully two. And those robots would do a lot of the sorting where they, they dump the mixed solid waste and they go through the, they, they, the, the robots then on a conveyor belt will pick out the different plastics and stuff like that. And we saw a, a, a video on it, it's quite amazing with how they can determine what something is and, and the motions and everything. And of course, then robots don't call in sick and you don't get healthcare and, and.
Plus, do you remember when we turned it, uh, pre-COVID? The people working on those lines, I mean, it was dirty and it was hot and I can see why they have trouble getting people to work that.
Yep, and they are short-staffed. I believe it was four people, plus they have longtime employees that are retiring.
Okay.
So we've got, uh, and they, they've said they've had people that have come, you know, come in for, for interviews and, uh, don't even finish the interview process and decide they're not going to work there or, or something comes up. So it, they, they only had one person interview in the last couple of weeks for openings there.
And then one more question, because I, I actually, I really liked being on this board, it was so informational. The compost with the, with the food and stuff, did they talk about that? How's that coming?
Um, going good. They're also having a, 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 talking about a new process where it's, uh, I guess I could just say dog waste.
Oh, really?
We'd be collecting that in a five-gallon, separate little five-gallon pail and stuff like that. So they hope to be rolling that out too.
And what, what are they going to do with it? Put it into a separate compost area?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, there's a lot of garbage from that, so if they could do that.
Yeah, and they'd kind of like to get it out of the main.
Yes.
Waste stream.
Yep, that's right. Well, thanks, that was interesting.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, can we do a little break?
So we'll do a, a ten-minute break here before we.
So I would actually ask that you call to adjourn this meeting?
Okay.
And then, and then we'll take the break and then we'll.
So Char makes a motion to adjourn. Dan seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Okay.